All right. Good evening Crowley ISD and thank you all for joining us for our Esser Virtual Town Hall this evening. We know this is a busy last week of school with a lot going on and we want to thank you for taking time to join us. I'm going to hand this presentation over to a great team of presenters tonight, starting with our Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Connie Isabel. Good evening, Ms. Isabel.
Good evening, Anthony. Good evening all and thank you so much for taking time out of your day to come out to share your thoughts with us. This Town Hall meeting is centered around the Esser Funds. Esser is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds that was authorized on the American Rescue Plan. The purpose is to respond to the pandemic and secondly, to address the student loss as a result of COVID-19. We are tonight seeking information from you, the community, from teachers, from staff, so that we can address this as we go forward. Mrs. Polk, who is the expert on Esser 3, will now walk us through this presentation. So, thank you, Ms. Polk. Take it away.
Thank you so much, Ms. Isabel. Well, it's exciting to be here with all of you tonight to give you a little bit of information about Esser 3. So, as Ms. Isabel stated, the American Rescue Plan was put in as an act that was passed. That was $122 billion that was passed across the United States. Texas received $12 billion and Crowley ISD is going to receive approximately $25 million. Now, that lump sum will be broken down into two installments. The first two thirds will be approximately $16 million and the other one third will be approximately $8 million. And we'll receive that third installment at a later date when TA releases it. So, what's the purpose of this Esser Funds? What are we going to do with these? America released these funds, North America, United States of America, released these funds for us to be able to combat learning loss that we experienced through the COVID pandemic and to help us safely reopen our schools. So, what can we purchase with these funds and what are some of the things that we can actually do with this money? Some of the allowable things that we can do is extending learning such as after-school or before-school or anytime on Saturdays, that's considered extended learning, also during the summer, providing professional development for teachers and paraprofessionals and all staff, and English language learner support and social and emotional support, which we have some students on today who are going to walk us through some of their thoughts and what they think about what that should look like. In addition, we also have technology. A part of this grant, 20% of those funds have to be spent on extending the learning and summer learning in that SEL and that is most social and emotional piece. So, how long do these funds last? So, these funds will last until September 30th of 2023. However, we have a one-year, which is a 12-month carryover option, which we can still extend those funds until September 30th of 2024. So, Crowley ISD is doing a comprehensive stakeholder engagement process to help us determine how we should spend these federal dollars. We started back in May 27th with a public hearing at our board meeting and then we launched a survey, May 28th, and that ran from till June 4th. And tonight, Mr. Kirchner will go over those results with us to kind of tell us what it looks like. And then tonight, we have our virtual Town Hall meeting where you're able to ask questions and we can answer them as much as we can. And then finally, once we get our grant submitted, we will have what's called a NOGA. Once we get our NOGA, which is Notice of Grant Award, we'll have one more final public hearing. And once we do that, we'll post our major plan to our website. And now, I'm going to let Mr. Kirchner go through those survey results with you. So, Mr. Anthony Kirchner?
Thank you, Ms. Polk, for that great information about the Esser Grant. So, as Ms. Polk mentioned, you saw there on your screen, we did have that stakeholder survey. This was emailed out to all of our parents, our staff, posted on our website. And in that week-long survey, we had a lot of great responses received. We had more than 400 and we had 496 people complete the survey. You'll see the breakdown there on your screen of parents and guardians and employees. And we even had a small number of students participate in it. And like we said, this is a very busy time of the year, so we want to thank everyone for completing the survey. One of the big questions that we asked in the survey were listing the top five priorities to address the COVID learning loss. This is what the Esser Grant is about. And we listed a variety of options there in the survey and we wanted to run through what those top five choices were based on everyone's rankings. Coming in at number one was to provide instructional materials, resources, and activities and outreach to meet the needs of students. Number two was to provide social and emotional counseling, wellness supports to students, and professional development training to staff. Number three was to provide technology updates and improve the infrastructure and connectivity. We saw how important that was during the height of the pandemic and Crowley ISD made great gains in that area. Number four on that list was to provide students who have disabilities with the various services that were disrupted due to COVID-19. And rounding out the top five was to provide additional school days, extended school hours, summer enrichment, tutoring, and staff development to accelerate student learning. So, that was our top five priorities listed by everyone who completed the survey. And tonight, as Ms. Polk mentioned, we have two students with us that are going to talk in particular about that item number two that came in second, providing social, emotional, and counseling and support to students and professional development for staff to help them with that. I'll introduce these students and let them kind of take over and tell you what their idea is. We love having students' perspective in this process. We're excited to have students participate in the survey. And then just last week, the timing of this just was really great. We had our finals for our Mission Possible. It's a district-wide competition where students of all ages from across the district are tasked with completing a challenge, finding something that seems impossible but making it possible. And this year's presentations feature were built around the COVID pandemic and responding to that. Tonight, on the Zoom with us, we have our high school winners from North Crowley 9th Grade. They're Jaden Mayfield and Mr. James Williams. And are y'all with us? Can y'all hear us?
We can hear you.
Hi there. How are y'all?
I'm fine. Yeah, we're good.
Well, we, first of all, congratulations for being high school champions of the District-Wide Mission Possible Competition. So, we would like for y'all to tell us about Mission Possible and tell us about your idea to solve a really tough problem. And I believe you all have some slides that you wanted to share. So, I'm going to hand over screen sharing to y'all and let y'all take it away. Thank y'all for joining us. You should be able to screen share now, Jaden.
All right. Okay. So, as you know, my name is Jaden and this is Alan. We would like to present this information to you in a simple what, why, and how scenario. So, oh, sorry, I can't. My slides aren't working. Okay. So, the problem that we identified was mental health. As you can clearly see on the data charts here, COVID has negatively impacted our mental health. Due to limited time, we can't show you the rest of our data from previous presentations, but there's a lot more. Um, so, here's the why.
As for our why, mental health, our mental health affects all aspects of life, including student performance. And we know this because this hits home. These are problems we deal with on a daily basis. We also understand that this affects parents and teachers as well.
So, before we move on to the how, we have our solution called Crowley Cares. And basically, our solution was we created three Google Forms, one for a mental health check-in given to students in their advisory period twice a month. And then the second form was for immediate service emergencies. So, you know, they're going to be put in places like the bathrooms and stalls and stairways where, you know, the more isolated places that students will go. And then the last form is for group therapy sessions led by peers. And all the form results will go to our counselors and mental health professionals. So, how the funds will help us, well, basically, they will go into hiring and training new mental health personnel for each campus. This will result in no more splitting social, emotional personnel between campuses. It would also go to advertising Crowley Cares and training for group sessions. That's it.
Jaden and Alan, fantastic job. It's clear to all of us why you all were able to advance in the competition and then ultimately be crowned the high school champions of Mission Possible. Tell us about that process of presenting in the different rounds and coming up with this plan. How was it? What did you learn?
So, basically, you know, trying to put the piece together, we knew what we had in mind and we had all these different ideas. It was probably more of like placing them together and making them look good as a presentation instead of, you know, a presentation where it's just, here are our ideas. The timing, the timing, some things were last minute, so it was kind of like rush, rush, rush. But the satisfaction of like how it ended and the results were satisfying very much.
Like, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Alan.
Oh, I also feel like we kind of learned how to like work under pressure kind of and we kind of learned how to navigate through all the stress that we were under because both of us were dealing with a lot with like school and like all of that. So, it kind of there was the opportunity to see what it's like to work through all that.
Absolutely. And how does it make you feel to know that a project you work on and a need that you see in your fellow students and teachers and staff and families is something that Crowley ISD is looking at and looking at expanding and now having funds to possibly do things like that? How does that make y'all feel?
I feel pride, honestly, in my work. There is a lot of happiness towards the idea of this topic that we brought up actually being heard, you know, and dealt with because it's not, you know, that's our whole thing, mental health isn't being talked about as much as it needs to. So, just that idea alone is very fulfilling to me.
Yeah.
Well, we are so proud of both of you again from on behalf of all of Crowley ISD, everyone joining our Town Hall tonight. Congratulations. Thank you for your work and for focusing on this very important topic and for taking the time to come here tonight. And it really brings to life what we're talking about here. When we see these numbers on a screen and programs just listed, sometimes that can get lost in the presentation. But when we see our students and their ideas for how we can use these funds to make Crowley ISD a better place to learn and work and live. Wow, y'all, y'all have done a great job representing all of our 16,000 students. So, congratulations. Thank you for being with us.
Mr. Kirchner, may I ask the team a question because I definitely am intrigued by their suggestion. I just want to ask him a couple of questions about the SEL specialists and why they, why they, why they ended where they, where they deal with the recommendation, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
All right. So, so Ms. Mayfield, I know that you said that there is a need and it's a need that's kind of been, that hadn't been addressed and it's even more so a need now with the pandemic. And so, I know we have, we had a halftime position there at your campus and then also at Ally Middle School, we had a halftime position. At the other middle schools, I believe we may have had a full-time position. So, talk to me about why you feel like we need full-time positions at all the campuses.
Um, if I'm understanding what you said correctly, you know, I just heard that our, our mental health services, we have to share between campuses.
Right.
So, you know, there are actually like on-spot emergencies that happen within a school day, within school seconds, and they can't be dealt with right away because of that reason. So, that's why I feel like you should go into that matter.
Right.
Did that answers your question?
Yeah, that did, that did. So, do you think we need one at every school or is it a certain grade level where you feel like there's more of a need than other, other grade levels?
Um, I think that, we think that this should be provided really at every campus because from my experience, I thought that like only like teenagers and like middle schoolers and adults suffered with like mental health issues. But when I started to go to like, when I went to a place called Mesa Springs, I saw that there were like a lot of like little kids there and I was like, why are there little kids here? And it kind of like opened me to the idea of like not only middle schoolers or teenagers or adults to deal with mental health issues, it's also like little kids. So, I think that we should really have that at every campus and like every grade level just so they can have the opportunity to talk through what they might be feeling.
And you know, starting from a young age, if you have somebody that you go to, it's probably going to let you feel more comfortable as you're growing up. So, that also feeds into the factor of us wanting more help in every campus.
Got you. So, so also, I know I was reading somewhere in someone's proposal about clubs and activities. So, having additional clubs and activities, does that make a difference or is that something that, that maybe we, I mean, I, what, how y'all feel about that as it relates to mental health and as it relates to students being connected?
Um, so, I'm going to let Alan go off of his personal experience and then I'm going to go after him.
So, I think that as a whole, like, mental health is seen as like this dark, scary, sad thing. But really, there, there is like a light to it. There is like, uh, sometimes a good ending to it. And I feel like if we just kind of had all these kids and like asking them to talk about their like struggles and their bad experiences, I feel like it's going to have like a negative atmosphere because it's going to be like a lot of emotions. And then, once you have all that emotion, you need something to like lift your spirit up. And that's kind of what I went through. Um, I, I didn't want to go to like Mesa or anything and I thought that it was like really scary and like sad because there was a lot of kids talking about like the stuff that they went through. But then we got to like depict our feelings through like drawing or like just some activity that shows how we feel with like involving hands-on activities. So.
Well, you basically summed it up. Um, yeah, having a place where you can go to and then enjoy the things you like. So, in our sessions, I know I included like I want the students or I want everyone to at least hear a song or do an activity that they like or just, you know, I want their ideas and their interests to be heard and acknowledged so that they can be more comfortable in their space because we don't have that a lot. You know, we're isolated, we're stuck sometimes half the time. So, giving that to people would be very beneficial and it plays a, I'm sorry to say this again, but it plays a really big factor in my mental health. The more comfortable we are, the more open we'll be and the more, the better we'll be, you know?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Well, Dr. McFarland, thank you for allowing us to, one, host the Mission Possible Competition where we got to hear great ideas from students across the district and these are just two of them representing multiple teams. So, once again, Jaden and Alan, thank y'all so much for being involved. Please feel free to stay on and listen to the other questions that come up. We're almost done with our formal presentation. I have an opportunity for our attendees to type questions in the Q and A or raise their hand, opportunity to speak. So, if y'all are able to stay on, please do. We just had a couple of other slides and I wanted to get back to that really quick. Um, one of the other questions we asked on the survey were, beyond the traditional school day, what types of programs do you believe Crowley ISD should consider to accelerate student learning? And this is how everything right there and you saw number one comes in is tutoring and then after-school programs, summer learning programs, and then a mix of blended learning programs. And so, we also in our survey, if you participate in that, you know there are some opportunities to provide open-ended responses. And we got pages and pages of submissions that we are reviewing and are taking part of our grant application. So, thank you all for everyone who completed that survey. Again, we had almost 500 people participate in the survey and really give us some great feedback and data. So, Dr. McFarland, Ms. Isabel, Ms. Polk, that's our formal presentation. It looks like we're starting to get some questions in the Q and A box and a couple of folks raised their hands. Before I start going through those, were there any additions you'd like to add this evening? All right. Um, here. Okay. One of our first comments was from Ms. Marcos. She says she's so happy to hear these young people raising their voice on this topic. Mental health should be a priority as there's a lot of changes in society going on, it can be hard for adults. How could it not be hard for kids? That's exactly right. Kids need to learn how to develop emotional intelligence to deal with any circumstance that comes their way, supporting them throughout the way in the place where they spend most of their time is key. And so, that's school. So, we agree, Ms. Marcos. Thank you for that, sharing that information. We did have a question from someone asking about if this money can be used to raise the salary of professionals. Uh, I think, I think they're saying paraprofessionals. Um, and so, could this money be used to raise salaries? Dr. McFarland?
So, I do think there may be a provision that will allow that if they, if there was a way to tie the salary increase directly to improving learning or learning loss. And so, if that, if that paraprofessional was connected to, to increasing instructional time or providing tutorials or providing after-school, then that would, that would be possible. Otherwise, it, it may be, may not be possible. However, there are other mechanisms that we use. Understand that these Esser Funds are specifically for COVID relief. Uh, we have other fundings through our, through our normal funding, our 199 funding or general funding. That's where we really look at teacher salaries, paraprofessional salaries. And what we attempt to do is make sure that we remain in the top five in pay in, in this region, in this area. We've done that for both secretaries all the way up through, through teachers, principals and all. We've been at the top one or two, in some cases, top three or four spots. So, we evaluate that all on a consistent basis.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, so, if you have questions, this is the time, just use that Q and A box and type in your question or you can select to raise your hand there and I can allow you to speak live on our webinar.
So, while we waiting on another question, I do have a question for, for Mayfield or, or the other young man. So, what other, and let's assume that we make all the investments we need to make in health, in mental health. What would be the next thing you believe that will be on the list to help improve the learning loss, help recover the loss of learning that's occurred over the, over the pandemic? Any other ideas, Mayfield?
Um, so, wait, I'm sorry. Can you ask that again? Like?
Okay. So, so, so basically, the question is, we are attempting to create a situation where we can increase the learning of students over a period of time that we, well, let me, let me, let me say, that, that's confusing myself. Let me ask a different question. All right. All right. So, during COVID, we know we lost quite a few days of instruction. We lost about 140 hours worth of instruction in reading and math over the, during the pandemic. So, that's lost time that, that we have to figure out how to make up. So, the question is, how do we make up the lost learning time of the, over the, from the last year?
Um, I know it was mentioned earlier, I really like the idea of tutoring. Um, I know from personal experience, I go to tutoring and honestly, my grades have risen. But with me saying that, I was also, I'm also a student who wants to learn, you know, and I want to be engaged in my learning. I just didn't have the right resources and outlets for that. So, you know, just that's, it's kind of one of those questions where like, yeah, we can do this, but how are we going to get other people to want to do this too? Because it's not just providing tutoring and saying, you know, it's not mandatory, but it would be advised. It's also wanting them wanting to go themselves to get the help they need.
Got you. All right. Good. Thank you for that. Alan, what, what about you? What do you, what do you think we should, we should do in addition to tutoring and in mental health?
Um, I think that we should take more consideration into like testing, I think, because I guess this is kind of a part of mental health, um, but like trying to separate it. Like, testing has stressed out a lot of people. And I feel like if we took more consideration into like, okay, do we think testing is right? Like, do we think that, because some group of kids are going to perform as well as they could, but then another group may perform bad, but they know they can do better. But, um, you know, something like that, you know?
So, really looking at how we're using testing and, and whether we are testing too much or the right, are we testing the right materials? Like, right kind of things? Is that what you're saying?
Can I add on?
Okay.
A little bit. Um, so, as well as testing, well, as far as it goes, it kind of felt like the lessons were rushed, you know? I couldn't, there are so many things to get over with to make it to this one test and then move on to the next thing that I'm just like, okay, just turn it in, just turn it in, just turn it in. And then, oh no, here's the big test where everything is included and I forgot everything. I didn't learn anything. Nothing was processed, you know? So, just going off of that too would be helpful in a way.
Yeah, I mean, and you, you make a great point because it's, uh, it definitely is a lot, lot, a lot more difficult when you were doing online and you're having all these things come at you and you're testing. And so, yeah, we, we actually are evaluating our assessment cycle, which is really the cycle with, which is the cycle that we use to test and how many tests and all that. I can tell you, testing is probably not going away, but we're just really evaluating how we are using it to make sure we're getting the best out of it. So, your points are, your teachers are saying the same thing, your principals are saying the same thing to us and we, we hear you and we agree for sure. Mr. Kirchner, I think there may be a couple of questions in the Q and A.
And a couple, just more great feedback from our attendees for Jaden and Alan saying, great job. I'm going to just share these comments there on the screen. Y'all can see those. One of them comes from one of our employees who's actually a North Crowley grad, class of 2010, and is really proud of your game-changing ideas. So, thank you so much. Bravo, Jaden and Alan. Um, so, also, Dr. McFarland, our next question was about, will the Esser Funds that were being provided help close the gaps in COVID learning loss, free up C I S and funds in the budget to give employees a raise for the 2122 school year?
So, that's a great question and we are in the middle of the budget planning process right now. But to answer your question directly, I do believe that the Esser Funds will allow us to take care of a lot of the, a lot of the other expenses that we have had in the past and will free us, free our budget up to be able to address teacher salaries. I know last year, we, we were not able to give raises, but we were able to give payments. I do believe that, that, that we'll have the opportunity to, to either do raises or payments again based on our current budget. Also, our, you know, our, our team, we've done, done a great job of just really managing the prior budget. So, we're in a strong financial position and so, we fully anticipate to be able to address teacher compensation, whether it's through a raise or through a payment, we're not sure yet. But we do know that these Esser Funds will help us to do that and help us do it in a way that I believe will be significant for, for our teachers and parents and, and others involved.
All right. Thank you, sir. Another question, I just want to reiterate, this is something we shared in the presentation. This money can be used to extend the school hours for extended learning days.
Yeah. And so, the good thing about that is so, so, you know, Mayfield and Alan, what we talked about earlier was, we calculated there was about 140 hours that, that was lost. And so, when I was looking at some data today, I was looking at where we are right now from a, from an academic standpoint and I was comparing it and really when I compare it, it looks like we are performing right now. We lost probably about a year and a half, you know, here, a year and a half. And so, we got to figure out how to make that up. And in some cases, we are, we're extending the school day. At, 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 at a Hargrave, for example, we've extended the school day now. It's not, it's not like they're going to school at eight o'clock, but they, they are going to school for an extended day compared to our other elementary schools. And they've been doing it for two years and what we've seen is that when we extend that day and we have after-school tutorials and after-school activities, not just tutorials, but after-school activities, and the teachers have more days of planning, more days of professional development, then we see significant gains in achievement. And so, just by extending the school day at Hargrave and doing some other things, we saw significant growth at Hargrave even though we had the loss of the COVID, COVID loss and all that. At other campuses, we didn't necessarily see that. What we also know though is at David Walker this year, we're extending the school year. Now, the day is still the same, so they still, still will get out of this, out of school the same time, but they will start school earlier and, and be, and, and that way will actually go about 30 more days. So, they'll start school on July the 12th, I believe. And so, really, that's 30 days earlier. What we also going to do at every other campus is we've approved, we, we have approved actually providing after-school tutorials and Saturday school, uh, uh, learning experiences and all at all of our campuses. And we'll do it in some form or fashion. It's not required right now. And we'll do it in some form or fashion. It's not required right now, not mandated today. But at every campus, we'll have opportunities to extend uh learning, extend uh, 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 the, uh, the time that students have to process and to provide additional tutoring and one-on-one as well. We think that those things together will help us to address the issues.
Absolutely. Um, so there's a question about, um, could there be the possibility of uh providing incentives to encourage students to attend tutoring and to perform well academically and really engage in their learning? Could these incentives be purchased with ESSR funds?
So you know, that's, that's a great question, and I know that there are some stipulations about incentives. But uh, what we would want to do and what we plan to do actually is get a group of students together uh within the next week or so, if not before, well, it won't be before, but probably would be, be within the next week, and just have a conversation about the type of incentives that you all like. You know, in my day, a, a, a ice cream party with, with ice cream sandwiches in, in school, that was, that was an incentive. You know, that was a big deal. Having popcorn in, that was a big deal. Uh, but you're, but, but what I know is students now, there may be other incentives. And so what we're going to do is try to get together a group, a team, and, and Mayfield and Alan, you know, with our, with our superintendent advisory group, we'll bring those back and just get together, have a conversation about, okay, what would it take for us to, 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 to reward you for attending three days of after-school, uh, um, three days of after-school learning a week? Like what, what would entice you to do that? Would it be a, you know, pass to the movie? Well, we don't have movies anymore, do we? So Netflix is kind of taking out movies. Could it be something else, you know? Uh, but we, we're going to ask students to help us design it because we, we simply are not sure right now.
All right.
But to answer your question, we will have incentives, whether ESSR funds will be used or local funds will be used. That's the question that we have to answer.
And even Dr. McFarland from our, from our partners in the community, they, they do a great job of providing incentives for students for the month and things like that. So there are ways to provide that, even if it's not ESSR funds.
Yeah, absolutely, no doubt.
So uh, someone, Miss Nadia, uh, was raising her hand. If Miss Nadia, can you hear us? You should be able to speak if you have a question to share.
Um, I put it in the question and I was just wondering about how do we reach the kids? You know, you have two types of kids or even more. How do you reach the kids that have a hard time learning and they want to give up? That it just doesn't come easy to them?
Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's a great question. And you know, one of the things that we, we believe is that, that uh, some kids need more time and, and most of them need more attention, especially if they're, if they're struggling. This maybe because they learn in a different way or learn, learn at a different pace. And so what we, what we're uh, uh, planning to do on campuses uh with the, with some of the funds is to hire what we call uh interventionists, like reading interventionists, math interventionists, and then also what we call a teacher on special assignment. Those are some ideas that we've kind of thrown around initially to get additional personnel on campus to be able to really identify those kids that may not be uh, uh, moving at, at the rate that we think they, they need to and make sure we're getting them what they need. And so when you have these interventionists, you have the S E L specialists and you have the other uh, uh, interventionists or, or, or specialists that are on campus due to special needs, then we believe that, that these personnel, if they are the personnel that we're hiring, if they are implementing a case management model, then we feel like that increases the likelihood that we can, that, that we'll be successful. So for example, let's just take Deer Creek, for example. As Deer Creek, if we give Deer Creek a reading specialist uh as a result of the ESSR funding, we call them a COVID response reading specialist. What we would do is we would use our assessments to identify which students need the direct support. And then that specialist would actually have a caseload, basically like a social worker. That case, that, that specialist though, uh, is an educator who would have a caseload where those students that, that are on her caseload, that person will be responsible for making sure they got what they need, when they needed, how they needed and all that. And so we're thinking, we, we are uh being very intentional with these additional positions. And they're not just positions we're giving to campuses. There are positions that are being given with the idea that they are targeted for those students who, who need them the most.
All right, so where the funds run out? Do they still be employed?
All right, great, great. I think I heard a question and it was a great one and I'm glad she asked that question. Her question was, and if it's wrong, Miss Nadia, uh, correct me, but I think your question was, well, what happens when the funds run out? Will that person still be employed? And so the answer to that is that, that is, that is no. Uh, well, with these positions, that we're calling these positions COVID response positions, because the funding is outside of our, of our general budget, of, of our natural allocation. And so if we're going to hire these people now, because we know these positions now, because we know we have immediate needs and we have funding, but once the funding goes away, these positions will either uh be removed or will have to take on a diff, uh, different roles. But these commitments to these positions are really, uh, they're really one year at a time. And as the, uh, as the results are, are, are provided, they say that they're effective, then we add the next year and the next year. So these are, these are not permanent positions.
Great. Well, Dr. McFarland, thank you, Miss Nadia, for those great questions. We really appreciate you taking the time to ask those. And Dr. McFarland, along that line, um, Miss Stanny Isaacs, who is a, uh, local librarian here in the city of Crowley, asking about would the possibility of librarians be reinstated to enhance student learning?
So what we do know is that we know librarians play a, a critical role and we know that libraries are critical to us as we continue to try to increase literacy, increase reading. And so we definitely are looking at, at the, uh, the, the books and the, and the resources that we have available to students. And so as i- if, if the librarians come forward as a request, there's something that we evaluate. But at this point in time, we're focused on uh the, the positions, reading interventionist, math interventionist, uh specialist. Uh, and so several campuses have librarians, several of them may not. For those that don't have them, then we would, we would address those uh as, on an individual campus basis.
Thank you, Miss Isaacs, for that question. Dr. McFarland and team, we have a couple of people asking about, well, what if we're not in, uh, support of or interested in our students taking part in an extended school year or an extended school day? Um, what, what will learning look like during the traditional school day for students like that?
So yeah, so I think, can you ask that, ask that question again, Kirshen, I, I, cause I drifted halfway through.
So there, so some of the parents say, well, what if an extended school year or an extended school day isn't right for my student or our family? What would the options look like during that traditional school day to improve student achievement and address COVID learning loss without having to go to school extra time?
Yeah, great, great question, great question. So what we really have is, we have really, you know, it's two, really two questions in one, I believe. One is, how do we ensure that just during the time that we have them, just during the normal school day, that students are receiving the highest quality instruction possible? We call it tier one instruction. And so our focus is really to make sure that we have high-quality tier one instruction going during the day and that kids are at least making progress during the day, during the time that they have them. But also we know that there are interventions that are needed because kids are at different levels. And so we have extended our school in a way in which we're, we're, uh, what I say extended, not necessarily extended. We have actually modified how we're using our time during the, during the day to make sure we have blocks of what we call intervention blocks. And in these intervention blocks, if students having some issues, they can get the support they need during those blocks. Now, what we know though is we have to make up a hundred and forty hours. And so if all we do is attend school for a hundred and eighty-three days, then we're not going to make up the time. The kids are not going to make that time up that they're lost. And so we have to figure out how do we get time outside of the school day? How do we get time in the summer? How do we get time on weekends uh in order, in order to do that? And it may be a situation where if, if, if a kid can't stay after school, what we know is we have these software programs, we have the ability virtually to also have them engaged as well. So that's not a hundred and forty hours where a teacher is talking to them, but it is a hundred and forty hours where students are working on reading or math. We believe if we do that, we'll close that, that, that gap for sure.
We have another question asking, could these funds be used to make class sizes smaller?
Yeah, a great question. That, that's a, that, that is a question and it could be. And, and in some cases, they will be if we, if we ha- have determined that, that that is an issue. And it's, it's not an issue in every campus or in every class, but in some classes, we do have larger numbers that we need to reduce. And so in those cases, we can use these funds to reduce class size. The, 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 the thing about class size is this though. The research is clear that if you reduce class size by three or four kids, it may not have a significant impact. But if you can get the class size down to eighteen or fifteen, now, you know, going from twenty-eight to twenty-four, that's a reduced size, but it's not the same as going from uh, uh, twenty-two down to eighteen. Or to, and so anyway, it's just, it's being very, very intentional. Uh, it's important for us, for the educators, for us to be very intentional about, okay, where do we get the biggest bang for our buck? What classes can quite frankly be a little larger so that some can be smaller? Those are decisions that we have to make as well.
Uh, well, here's another question for Jaden and Alan, if they're still able to answer. Um, what's the best way to encourage other students to view getting help for social, emotional topics? A positive move and not be embarrassed by that and also encouraging them to help each other? Jaden, Alan, what do y'all think about that? How do, how do we de-stigmatize this kind of stuff?
Um, so when I saw that question, honestly, so many ideas popped into my mind. So using sources that teams or children or adults use throughout the day, which would be like TikTok, you know, Instagram, having a page and then, yeah, having a page where we can actually show what really goes on and like some of the things or activities that we could provide for us um would be helpful because if it looks natural and if it goes smoothly and natural at the same time, and I feel like, okay, you know, I can do that, you know, I want to see how this is. And then one more idea that kind of piggybacks off of that would be to like, um, sorry, I just lost it. Okay. Geez, what was the question again?
How to de-stigmatize this for students where they're not embarrassed to, to ask for help?
Um, so I said the social medias and then, um, you know, motivational signs, they come in play. So using those and then just advertising some of the plans we have going on for us, um, after-school activities and so on would be helpful too. You know, cause I feel if we also had, um, an example, yeah, an example of what we could do. So for example, our sessions, if we had volunteers to come to those and then, you know, record the progress and show that progress that we have made just within one session, pretty sure more students will be open to that, if you go in our scene.
Absolutely.
Does that answer it kind of?
Absolutely, yeah. Alan, is there anything you want to add?
Oh, yeah, I wanted to add, um, one thing that like kind of helped me like a little bit was seeing a lot of artists, like big influencers that struggle with mental health. Like, um, when I was again at Mesa, they had like this whole wall of like all these actresses and singers and actors who struggled with mental health and I feel like that was like a really big thing for a lot of people. Seeing like people that are their favorite or like really famous, like, oh, they deal with the same problems as me or they deal with the same problems as someone I know. It's like, it gives you, um, the ability to relate to someone.
That's a great idea, Jaden and, uh, both of you, Jaden and Alan, that just, uh, to, to see that real people, whether celebrities or athletes or teachers that they know or principals or anyone, you know, that this, this is something that, um, we all struggle with in some form or fashion at different stages in life. So great ideas. Dr. McFarland, I think you're going to like this next question, kind of suggestion from one of our attendees is there's an, is there an opportunity for retired teachers to participate in tutoring students and possibly provide stipends for them?
I mean, absolutely. That, that's really one of the, a key strategy because you know, that retired teacher brings just this wealth of knowledge. They know how to work with kids and have, have worked with kids their whole life. And so, and the, the tutoring and intervention is flexible. And so it just makes sense. It would, it would work well with, with, with retired teachers' schedules. And so it gives them a chance to stay connected to the mission. And so if there are any retired teachers after, if you are, if your parent is a retired teacher or you are, live next to one, we need retired teachers, uh, uh, definitely, uh, back in the, in, in, in the, in the fold so that we can really address the issues that we have before. So absolutely, we can use it for that.
Uh, that's great. We, we have some great educators, lifelong educators in our community that are volunteering our schools. And I think to utilize them in this way would be phenomenal.
Yeah.
Um, I, we do have some of our other executive leadership and cabinet members who are on the call, Dr. McFarland. And I have Dr. Kohler and Miss, uh, Mr. Nicholas Keith. Dr. Kohler is our chief of staff and Nicholas Keith is our executive director of curriculum and instruction. Um, they were asking to raise their hand. Dr. Kohler, are you there?
Yes.
Did, did you have something to, to say, Dr. Kohler, about that topic?
Well, no, but I was just going to echo what Dr. McFarland said, that, that we always have a need for, uh, the need is always greater than the personnel. So if we have retired educators or personnel that want to volunteer, please reach out to, um, to myself or someone in the H R department and we will work to get you processed and get you working with our students.
Thank you so much for that, Dr. Kohler. Mr. Keith, are you there?
Yes, I am. Just trying to find the mute button.
There you go, sir.
Right, and I would definitely like to, to build on what Dr. McFarland said. When, and when it comes to interventions for retired teachers, um, in that situation, we're definitely going to be providing structure. So there's nothing that you would have to create from scratch, but we'll be providing the structure and the resources to really make that successful for you and for our kids.
Awesome. Thank you for that, sir. And team, as we're kind of wrapping up here, um, the questions are slowing down. I think we've been able to address most of them, but I think there is a great question in here from Jamie. In the midst of all this, as we're implementing these phenomenal programs, how will we know that our children and our students are getting the highest quality of education? Dr. McFarland and team, would you like to talk about the, the measures we have in place to ensure that what's happening in our classrooms is done with fidelity and is benefiting kids?
Yeah, so you know, one, one of the most important things, I know as a parent, the one, the one thing I want to know is that when, when my kid goes to, when my student goes to, to school, uh, it's in August, that they leave in May having grown, that they have, they have improved. Uh, recognizing the kids improve, improve at different levels. I just want to make sure that at minimum, my kid's grown a one, one-year time period over a one-year, uh, over, over the entire school year, at least one year. The problem with that though is if they've only grown for one year over the course of a year and they started off behind, then they're going to end up behind in, at the end of the year. And so we have to figure out, how do we accelerate them? Well, one of the things we know is what COVID has taught us is that, that star may not always be the best measurement. Uh, that there are other things that we need to measure. There are other skills that we need to measure and fundamentals that we need to measure. And so what we have now is we have a beginning of the year assessment that will be done in August in all grade levels. Uh, and there will be a, uh, assessment that measures just basic, basic skills, fundamental skills uh that are necessary for students to learn and grow. Uh, and then we also have what we call a M O Y, which is a middle of the year. Uh, and that say, it's a, it's also the assessment, what we call a universal screener, is to determine where the kids are making progress from August to January or to the middle of the year. And then again, the end of the year. And so you asked me, how will we ensure that kids are making progress? One of the ways is we look at their progress uh in relation to their growth uh over the course of a year, not only compared to students here in Crowley, but also uh students across the nation with this map assessment that we use. Second, we want, we, we, we made sure, uh, internally by visiting campuses. We have benchmarks that we have to hit. We are doing walkthroughs. Administrators are looking at uh what's happening in the classroom, making sure that kids are getting what they need. And so really being, being intentional about, about monitoring instruction. That's critical, but also monitoring growth, uh, that's important as well.
Absolutely. And, and that's all, that's for all students, Dr. McFarland. So one of our attendees asked a question about, well, what about students who are in the middle? Maybe they're not behind or they're not advanced, they just kind of fall in the middle. And what you just talked about is for all students.
That's absolutely right. And, and, and that's a great question because really, you know, probably, probably about eighty percent of our kids are in the middle. You know, we have those, we have a, you know, a percentage at the top, percentage at the bottom, but the other one, they're in the middle. And so the things that we design, uh, although it may sound like it's for a unique or a special kid, it's really for all, for all of our kids. And so that's even, let, let's take for example, Avid. You know, this, many of you may know what Avid is. Avid stands for advancement build individual determination. And so what we have done with this program is in the past, it's been designed to help get students who are average students uh to get, to help them get prepared to take advanced or pre-A P courses. Well, in the past, we started it at the middle school and we know that Summer Creek and a couple of other schools are national demonstration Avid schools now. Uh, we, Jackie Carden has it at their elementary school. We've now expanded it to every elementary school in the district. And this, this will be the first year that every elementary school in the district will have this Avid program, which is really is designed to help uh teachers develop skills that will prepare our kids to be successful. Whether they are A P or whether they're advanced placement kids or G T kids or not, these kids will be taught the skills that help them to be successful in a pre-A P and an advanced class. And so we're doing, we're expanding it to our entire district. And so we think those kind of programs that are, are, are wide in scope will have the opportunity to, to help all kids, not just a single group of kids.
Well, that gr- great, great way to wrap this up, Dr. McFarland, how this is for all students. I, I have one last question for you. As a superintendent that's gone through what we've been through over the past fourteen to fifteen months, how excited are you for, one, the new year and to know that we have the ESSR funds coming to us to help with these kind of things?
Well, I tell you, you know, Kirshen- Well, I tell you, you know, Kirshner, when I, when I kind of thought about it a little bit this weekend, which is really thinking about where we are and realizing that, uh, I believe we have a window of opportunity. Uh, we've had, uh, you know, this eighteen months, we've had time to, to reevaluate everything that we're doing. We've developed new ways of doing things. Uh, new's not always better, let's be clear, but new is new and it's different. And so we now know how to do virtual meetings. We can have a virtual town hall and have fifty, sixty, seventy people with everybody being in their own home, but we still able to be here. We can do all these different things new now. We also now, uh, we also have had the time to think about what's the best way to do what we're doing. Uh, the pandemic taught us that we can't just continue to redo things the way we've done in the past. If we plan on doing, eh, eh, we've been planning on having different results. So now we have a different, we now we know, we have a different opportunity, we have a different way, we have an opportunity to design a different way. And then on top of that, we have the money to do it. In the past, people have said, do, you know, we want, they want you to do miracles in the past, uh, with, with no money. Well, now the, the, the thing that's exciting is there the only thing that will prevent Crowley I S D from being the top school district in Tarrant County. The only thing that will prevent that from happening will be the people in the mirror. Like when I would look in the mirror, if we don't, if it doesn't happen, it's going to be because I was not courageous enough, that I was, was, was not creative enough. And, and I didn't believe enough for our kids. I know that we do. And so now, you know, we talked to the principals and we said, hey, let's, we need you to dream. And we need you to figure out the best possible condition, the best possible resources, the best possible structure that we can put in place. Uh, to, to make sure that this is, this is, this, this becomes something, uh, something unique, that Crowley becomes something unique. And so I'm excited about it. We have the money. We don't have any excuse, there are no excuses. If we miss this opportunity, shame on me and shame on us. I don't believe we will. Uh, we have one year to prove that, that, that the money matters. And then if we prove it one year, we get money again for the second year. And if we prove it again, we get money for the third year. So I, I mean, this is a perfect, a perfect opportunity for us to create something new, not try to go back to normal, but really create something new. That's what's going to be important for us.
Absolutely. Well, it's an exciting time. We're wrapping up a, a great school year in Crowley I S D and we're planning already for the next school year. And so we are so excited and the work we do would not be possible without the input and collaboration from community, community members and parents and employees who are joining us today. So on behalf of all of Crowley I S D and the team that's working really hard to apply for these Ester funds. Thank you for your hard work for all students in Crowley I S D. Dr. McFarland, thank you for your leadership. Ms. Polk, Ms. Isabel, thank y'all for working hard to bring the Ester funds to Crowley I S D. We know, we know great things are going to come from this and.
All right. So yeah, and we definitely appreciate you for pulling this together, uh, Mr. Kirshner. And I, and I believe we may have a, a board member or board members on, like can't really see everyone, but I, I know that, uh, we may have a couple on. And if so, if there's a board member that'd like to share anything with our community, we want to make a pause and give you a chance to maybe raise your hand or, or let, let us know. Uh, but if not, uh, I can just tell you that this is an honor to work with, uh, with the board that we have currently. They are pushing us to be the best and that's, that's what we want. And so we appreciate our board, led by Ms. Hall, our board president, Dr. Hall. And also Dr. Mayfield, Dr. Benton, Ms. Davis, uh, Mr. Ray, Attorney Ray. And then also Mr. Gracia, uh, and, and, and Nedra Robinson. These are outstanding leaders. And they have, uh, really, really set us on the right path. Another celebration, Kirshner, while we're waiting on one of the board members to, to, to let you know. Another celebration is we have two new city council, uh, members in the city of Fort Worth. And they both are graduates of North Crowley High School. That, that's awesome. We're excited about that. We know that, uh, we're looking here at, at, at Alan and, 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 uh, and Mayfield there. And we know that they may be, they may be, uh, city council men or women in the making, but we definitely are appreciative, appreciative of that. And definitely proud as a, proud for our, for our North Crowley graduates.
Absolutely. Dr. McFarland, we do have one of our trustees, Dr. Latonya Woodson Mayfield, who's been joining us this evening. Hi, Dr. Mayfield.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I was just going to add in the chat, what an awesome session this is. And, um, thank you, um, to Ms. Polk and to, uh, the other leaders, Dr. McFarland. There's so many people, um, Dr. Hall for her board leadership, um, that made this possible. And I'm just, I'm just in awe for what's to come because you hit the nail on the head when you said, you know, shame on us if we don't use these funds and, uh, you know, use them appropriately. So I'm looking forward to seeing the fruits of all of the labor. Uh, and that's with all of the stakeholders involved, the parents, the teachers, the community members, the staff, the, you know, the board members, everyone coming together, um, for the success of, of, uh, of our district. And, um, so I'm looking forward to it. It's been a great session and I know more, you know, more, uh, information is coming. And I'm looking forward to, uh, working with, with you and team on making sure that we get all of this accomplished. Um, for our student success. That's what it's all about.
Oh, that. All right. Well, thank you all again, uh, for, for, for tuning in tonight. Uh, we definitely are excited about what is to come. And congratulations to all of the graduates. We know we'll be celebrating graduation on Sunday. And, uh, so we definitely are, are excited about that as well. Uh, I don't have anything else, Kirshner, so I'm done tonight. So like then, good night to everyone. Uh, Kirshner, if there's anything else?
That's it. Thank you all for tuning in. We continue to watch for updates on our website and social media.